I have the honors. We'll call the meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Revulinski.
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin.
Yes.
Hamus.
Yes.
Halli.
Yes.
Before we move to our consent agenda, are there any additions to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll continue on with our consent agenda. It includes approval of the minutes from our June 10th meeting, also from our June 13th and 18th special meetings. There's a salary resolution for city employees, which states numerous salary resolutions. This is the upcoming fiscal year salary statement. And then the resolution approving cigarette permits, as well as liquor license for Casey's General Store, number 1714, and the Walton Club, as well as approval of claims. And do we have a corrected amount for that?
No, I think that is the correct amount.
I went through the claims. I don't think that's the correct amount, but we'll approve it, and if we have to amend it next time, we can. And that's an amount of $442,390.39. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Hamilton, a second by Ledger Kaelin, I believe.
Well, or Martha.
Please call roll.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Halli.
Yes.
Revulinski.
Yes.
Hamus.
Yes.
Next, we'll move on to our form of public appearances. And the first one is a discussion about our bulletproof vest for our canine unit. So is this... We have our canine and our keeper.
Hi there. My name's John Hartley. I'm from Hogs for Dogs USA out of Atumwa. We're a charity that's been going, this is our 10th year. Primarily, we started 10 years ago to do spay and neuters. Spay and neuters in southeast Iowa don't work. People don't want to spay and neuter their animal. So we have found that emergency medical care has been a big thing. Elderly people that can't afford to take care of their animals, we've been helping with that. Our other projects have been oxygen masks for fire departments. Everybody within probably 50 miles here has an oxygen mask for dogs. And our next biggest thing is the ballistic vest for our dogs. Atumwa has one. Now David will have one. And they're set up just for these dogs. They've got stab plates in the side. That's the biggest thing to put a dog down. Most dog, people think dogs are shot. They're not. They're stabbed because they're done in close proximity after they go after somebody. So they're, they've got, they're ironed in the sides, so that'll take care of that. So what we're doing is just presenting this to David and Uno for the safety of Uno.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
John, thank you very much for the gift. Thank you very much for the gift, John. We, it's deeply appreciated. I'm sure Uno will especially appreciate it. Next, we have a presentation by, excuse me, presentation by Arthur Younger. See here? Yes. Arthur wanted to discuss about small electronics and battery disposal.
My name's Art Younger. I live here in Fairfield. And the other day, I came across some old calculators that I had, an old printer, and some batteries, like flashlight batteries. And there's really no place where you can bring these to have them recycled. I know you can go to Connolly's or the main place south of town where their headquarters is. So I was thinking that people shouldn't have to go all the way to those places to discard all of these items, that maybe we could have a collection station located at strategic places in town where there, there's empty space. Or in the case of small batteries, maybe we could convince the supermarkets to have some sort of a disposal kit for batteries. You know, you just drop your dead battery off, and then they can take care of the rest. So I haven't done any research or anything. It's just an idea. I think maybe it's, well, I did call the, some woman at the waste disposal offices, not here. They have an 800 number that you have to reach them. And I asked her if they collect batteries. She said, "Small batteries?" And I said, "Yeah." And she said, "Well, we really don't." And apparently, they go into the landfill, and eventually, they're going to leach out all the chemicals that they have in there and, you know, affect our water supplies or water. So that's all I have. I haven't done much else. I don't know where to take it from there.
We are having a new recycler opening up here in the city at the end of this month. Well, I'm not sure the grand opening is supposed to be Wednesday. But they take electronics and that type of thing.
Oh, right.
They're going to be located south of the Wolf Eye Clinic.
Oh, yes, yes.
Over next to the Best Western, right in, in the building right there.
That's convenient.
I'm not certain whether they do batteries or that type of recycling.
Not batteries. They'll do anything with a battery in it or a power cord for free. But batteries is something we do need to figure out.
So that would take care of, like, your printer or old calculators or...
I still have batteries from several years ago. I just didn't want to throw them away in the garbage, you know? And they're collecting in a bag, just waiting for the opportunity to discard them, so...
But when you called Waste Management's 800 number, they said they don't, or they haven't done anything like that as far as recycling?
That's what my understanding of, yeah.
And when you, you did contact Connolly, our current recycler who has our county recycling...
I did go out there a few years ago when I had similar items to get rid of. Didn't want to just throw them in the garbage. I had to pay them to discard everything. And I was convinced that they'd just take it and dump it. So I, but I don't know if that's true.
Well, it's good timing. I saw this in the report. I thought, "Well, if you'd come a year ago, we'd tell you you were out of luck." But today, we can tell you on Wednesday. It's at 102 South 23rd. There's a electronic recycling.
Oh, good.
That's opening.
Good.
Yeah. So, but for batteries?
I don't know of, I guess I've never heard of a recycling for batteries specifically, but that would be something that we could ask about with both our, our waste management and Connolly, and then also with these new recyclers that are opening up, to see if there is some venue that we could use to get rid of those. So it's nice that you brought it to our attention, because that's something I really hadn't thought much about, you know?
I know, I was in Europe several years ago, and the small little batteries for appliances of those double As were very, very expensive, almost four or five times as much as in the States. And I asked why. And they said that they charge that much because the rest of the money that is over and above what it costs to make the battery is used to dispose of them. So maybe eventually, they'll start doing that throughout the country. But where was that address?
102 South 23rd.
23rd?
Yeah, 23rd would be the street where Wolf Eye Clinic is.
Oh, that's right. Right. Okay.
And Best Western. And they are the first business south of the Eye Clinic.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
I would commend you also for coming tonight. I appreciate this. And I think you're right. The more convenient we can make it for people, the more likely people would recycle. And it does make sense, if we keep them out of the landfill, that it would be better for us. I would even encourage the environmental committee to consider this, if you want to look into it. I, it's just my, just speaking as a councilperson, encouraging you to do it, because something like Art suggested, making it convenient, if it's some kind of a, you know, Walmart or Hy-Vee, if they had a little box, they'd be willing to put up for us or something, if someone wanted to put that together. I bet we could easily do that and really increase the amount of recycling that happens there.
Make it very architectural, too, with flower pots and all kinds of things.
Really go nuts with it.
Spend a lot of money. Hey, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
The electronic recycler does want to have, they, well, obviously, they want to get as much material as possible, because that's their, their income. They do want to have convenient drop-off locations.
There you go.
This facility is actually their deconstruction facility. They want to open up drop-off locations in all the surrounding communities that would then be brought here. So even within our own community, if there were places at high-traffic areas where people could just drop it off, that would be a plus. Good timing. Thanks.
Currently, though, without that, people have to take their electronics or whatever they're disposing of, TVs, that kind of thing, to the recycler at this time, right?
To the landfill.
Yeah, to the landfill.
Or to Connolly's and paperwork.
Yeah. But now, they can take it for free. There's a charge for old TVs, but otherwise, everything is free at the new, new location.
Okay, good.
Okay, moving on to our resolutions, action items, and ordinances. Our first action item is to set a public hearing for the zoning of 809 West Taylor from an R2 to R3 on Monday, July 8th at 7:00 PM.
I would move for setting a public hearing.
By Hamilton.
Second.
Second. By Halli. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Okay. Next, we have a resolution to appoint Bankers Trust Company of Des Moines to serve as the paying agent, note registrar, and transfer agent, approving the paying agent and note registrar and transfer agent agreement, and authorizing the execution of the agreement.
Yes, Your Honor. Travis Squires is here from Piper Jaffrey to help walk us through this process tonight. Of course, he has been working with the city for several years, and he's our financial consultant. We appreciate Travis's efforts in helping us sort all this out and prepare us for this, and I'll let Travis take it from there.
You have a couple of resolutions and then action items tonight. Before we go into that, I figured I'd kind of give a brief presentation. Cut me off if it goes too long. As you know, I can, I can talk about this stuff for a long time. But, you know, I thought it's good for the council to be aware of what's happening, as well as to give you the opportunity to vet any questions in front of the public that you might have as, as you are representing your constituents regarding the economy. So there should be a presentation in front of you. There might be multiple copies. And, and what we put together is just a quick summary of what will be going over tonight. Mainly, we're going to talk about the work since January, when the city went through the bond rating discussion back in your planning session on Saturday, that Saturday in January. And then we'll kind of walk through the plan of finance moving forward, just kind of the overall plan. Talk a little bit about the 2013A financing that is up for approval this evening, and then answer any questions, and just a couple summary comments from me as well. Feel free to interrupt at any time, interject with questions as, as we go through. As Kevin said, Travis Squires at Piper Jaffrey. We worked with the city for, for many years regarding financing. Just recently, we've been taking a more kind of global role in assisting with some capital planning, as, as well as some financial review. We kind of set off from the January meeting, and the goal was, we needed more thorough understanding of the financial position of the city. From there, we started talking with the auditor from the last two years. We also met with the city's bond attorney, just to kind of review some of the upcoming capital needs, as, as well as talk about the, the recent bond rating downgrade and what that means for the city when they were accessing the capital markets. Through that time, we've had multiple planning, and I'd say discovery meetings, where we've just kind of walked through kind of a history. Obviously, you don't get from point A to point B overnight. There's a time that takes place, just kind of reviewing some of the decisions that perhaps have been made by past managers. Some of it is obviously council-directed, but ultimately, trying to bring more transparency to the overall financing process is the ultimate goal. So you're going to see three different worksheets on the next couple of pages that really walk through some of the things that were discovered, for lack of better terms, just, just to put the facts out there, so, so you can see the analysis that we went through, and then how we came up with the plan of finance. So I'm on page three. It says account balances from exhibit B and C of the audit report. So what we've done is we've just gone back, in this case, we've gone back from '04 to 2012. And kind of the focal point is going to be the change from '10 to '12, when there was what we call an account consolidation or fund consolidation at the city level that was directed by the prior financial manager or the city's manager. And, and just what that means with your audit reporting, and, and part of the reason why some of it's been talked about, well, a lot of it is really just an accounting change and, and what the rating agency is looking at with the downgrade. So if you focus on a couple of funds and look at the far-right column where it says the change from fiscal '10 to '12. So fiscal '10 would have been the, the last year before the fund consolidation took place. So you can see a very healthy general fund with $700,000. You can see your other funds are, are quite healthy until you get down to capital projects, which again, will, will lead into the 2013A discussion, where you're sitting at negative $2.2 million on, on capital projects that were slated for reimbursement. So, so that's what this 2013A financing will take place, will be the reimbursement of capital projects for the city. What you see then in '11 and '12 is a continuation. One of the things that took place was, when you looked at your general fund in 20, on your 2010, and then your local option sales tax fund, you can see a combined of about $800,000. If you went to the next year, you're combined about $600,000. However, it's illustrated as a significant decrease in the general fund and significant increase in the local option sales tax. Everybody at the city knows that that is not exactly what took place, because based on the citizens' input, when they pass the local option sales tax, city is required to spend the funds appropriately for each of the purposes as outlined in the statement. What happened with the fund consolidation was, is you lost the ability to track that because all of your funds are now in the general fund, and your prior auditor did not break out the differences between those allocations of expenditures. So part of the goal with the next audit is to get those amounts restated. And from conversations with Kevin, that sounds like it will be, shouldn't be an issue with the, with the auditor in fiscal '13. So that continued for two years, which is why you saw the significant decline in, in your, in your fund balance and the general fund. You saw increases in road use tax, local option sales tax, employee benefits for about the same amount that you saw the decrease in, in your general fund. My guess is when it's all sorted out at the end of the day, you're pretty much going to be very similar to where you were in fiscal '10 with your account balances, if some of those expenditures were actually valid out of road use tax, or we should be reallocating some expenditures from general fund to road use tax, as well as from general fund to employee benefits. So that process will take place over the next couple of months, but I did want to give you a little bit of a backdrop as to kind of what we've been working on over the last few months. You know, as a city, going forward, you know, I encourage you, you know, when you get an audit, you know, to ask yourselves, you know, "Is this what we expected? Is this where we thought it should be?" If, if yes, then, then move on. If no, then investigate. You know, with the change in management and the change in accounts, I think that's probably the only place where you say, "Well, should there have been more investigation? Should the auditor have done some of that?" I would say that, you know, there, there's probably some shared blame around, you know, from, from the auditing standpoint. But, you know, we move on. You know, this isn't supposed to be a finger-pointing exercise, but it's, it's a time to move on and for the, the council to make decisions on that, yes, we're going to move forward and we're going to rectify this. The next worksheet, then, is, again, taken from your audits. And if you were to go to the back of your audits, there is a summary, a schedule of findings and question cost in the, the back of the audit. And all they do here as, as an auditor, not that they're questioning the validity of this cost, but they list every account that has a deficit fund balance. So you can see, I broke that out, going back to '04, bringing it forward to 2012. I've also tried to classify down below, how much of that is general fund, enterprise funds, capital project funds down below. So you can see that a lot of these issues, if you look in the far-right column, the deficit balances that are capital projects, and in this case, special revenue, which, which is just a couple of funds, that is what is slated for reimbursement through this, through the financing that will be approved this evening. The enterprise fund deficits, those are being addressed with, with some of the rate increases that the city is looking at approving. So if you're looking at all these deficits as of June 30th of '12, all of these have basically been carried over from 2010, for the most part. A lot of them have existed for multiple years, and that's why I say these, these are costs that were just capital projects the citizens of your community have been enjoying. They're just been slated for reimbursement now, and, and the city has taken the necessary action step to do that this evening. Any questions thus far on, on these findings?
Travis, I do have a question.
Yep.
You know, when we look at historical fund balances, going back all the way to, you know, the past nine, 10 years here, they're about the same every year. You know, they vary slightly. I mean, yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, it went, it was double in 2006, but it was $2.2 million was our deficit balance in 2004. You know, the high was in 2006, 4.1. So why, you know, what's the difference now compared to back then? Why didn't we need to borrow this money back then to cover that?
I'm not saying you didn't need the money to, to do it back then. Part of the reason is that you're under some increased scrutiny now from the bond rating agency because of a bond rating downgrade. And the lack of rectifying this situation will only put further pressure on your bond rating. So some of these deficit capital projects are slated for annual reimbursement. Maybe you're waiting on grants on some. Maybe you're waiting on the funding or the financing that'll come in place two years later. What we know now in 2012, though, is, is you're out of capital project money from your bonds. So there's, there's no other resources outside of perhaps a few different abatement schedules to, to pay off this deficit. And, and when I say deficit, what it truly is, is just capital costs that need to be reimbursed. See, we're not addressing any of the enterprise funds with, with the borrowing. We're just addressing valid capital projects that, that fit within the required law for the city to be able to bond for them.
As well as that, also, it's important to point out that what people call now the new normal, today is, is after 2009. And so basically, people call this the new normal. You see a lot more increased pressure on revenue sources. Revenues are down in some cases. We've been lucky on our sales tax, but generally, it's not as level a playing field. It's a little bit more choppy water right now. And the pressure also coming in on state and local governments is, you know, fiscal house in order kind of issue. Carrying, continuing to carry structural deficits can provide a pretty decent brick wall down the road. And so in, in the new normal, it pays to have that not be the case. Consolidate those debts to get those debts paid off, so that you're traveling forward to revenues you know you have yearly, and also the, the funds in the bank that you know you have. Because, keep in mind, part of what balances these funds at the end of every year are things like library funds and things like that that we have, but essentially, we cannot use. You know, the library, those are, those are earmarked funds, essentially. Many of the, of our funds have that kind of a nature to them, so...
But the point that Travis made is that not all of this was completely unfunded. We will get funding.
That's true.
Sidewalk repair comes in, special assessment. Some of this could be grants. So we're just taking care of it all in one lump sum, but that doesn't mean that we had $1.9 million in outstanding unfunded...
That's right. Many revenues would be put to bear on a yearly level, like the abatements come in yearly. They'd go down on that debt.
Yeah.
Yeah, or this, this debt we're incurring to do it. So true.
And that's, that's why we're able to pay this back without raising property taxes, partly.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the goal of the financing, is, you know, in, in combination with, you know, the city has the approved referendum for the swimming pool indoor rec facility. You know, at that time, it was talked about as 70 cent, 76 cent tax increase is, is part of the communication. You know, the, the goal of working through this is, is all of this still fits within the debt profile that the council and the city has communicated to the patrons, so...
I have a question from your point of view. Are you familiar with the, the new state law regarding commercial property tax?
Yes.
Adjustments? So I'm concerned, you know, that we're basing our ability to repay this on our, you know, appraised values, our present appraised values, which are going to go down in that system. Now, you know, in the first two years, two years, we're going to, you know, there's going to be some fund that's going to shore us up. But after that, they're hoping, well, we're going to have enough new valuation to cover, you know, because we're going to have so much development in two years that we're going to cover the losses that we're incurring. It's quite a leap of faith, and especially in, just, you know, as we're ready to plunge in here to all this debt, we're, aren't we, are, are we being a little reckless or careless to, to not consider the fact that we're going to perhaps not have the, the same tax base to pay it back that we're, that we're assuming right now?
Well, that's, that's the case for every city around.
Yeah.
It's a card that's, that's dealt your way. The, the alternative is what? To continue to operate as normal of carrying a $2 million deficit in your capital project funds. You know, at, at some point, that, that comes to bear. The city's ability to access the capital markets could go away. You have substantial, substantial projects on the horizon that will require accessing the capital markets. The lack of ability or the inability of the city to be, to be proactive in addressing the financial issues that you have could be a detriment in accessing the capital markets. I'm not going to say that it'll be shut out completely, but you'll be certainly borrowing at a higher interest rate than you otherwise would have, should you take the necessary and appropriate actions of shoring up the fund balance.
There's a very significant portion of the picture of our fiscal solvency that that represents, because it's going to sock you for $2 million a year, no matter what you do. So it's just going to be a weight that you're carrying around, some monkey on the back that you're carrying around for that, for how long? We don't know. If we don't do this, how long would it take us to pay that off?
Well, we're going to pay off the, we're going to pay off the bond. It's $2 million. We're going to pay them off over however many years. Yes. We could pay off ourselves over however many years, if we had some discipline.
Well, actually...
Well, it, it, the thing that is, is, the important thing about doing it this way, though, is if you try to do it yearly, doing it that way, and we are going to hopefully try to go to our citizens, increase the flexibility of our revenues, i.e. sales taxes, when it comes time in November. And our target, you know, window for this debt is to try to get this debt down to where it's about $100,000 a year from, on a cost level to us, you know? In other words, instead of 1.9, try to get that back down to about 1.0, 1.1, you know, no higher than 1.2, so that its impact isn't that great? You can take some of this flexibility in the yearly budgeting process. But if you didn't do that, and it wasn't taking the flexibility in the yearly budgeting process and, and doing that one, that one abatement a year, then you're saying to yourself, "Okay, we're going to work into the yearly budgeting process, a way to take $100,000 in sales taxes and, and put it down in our internals, and we'll put it here for now. And then when that one's paid off, we'll go to the next one." But having carried these for 10 years, our own confidence in our institution, not ourselves, but our institution's ability to do so shouldn't be very strong, because we haven't been able to do so so far. And at one point, it actually creeped up to about $4 million, if you look in your schedule. So we don't know in the future if the, if the folks sitting in our seats wouldn't even feel the same as we do about it today, and therefore, it could creep back up. Now it becomes a serious threat to fiscal solvency of the city, a threat. And if we handle it now, and we're on an abatement schedule, we can't, that no one's going to get out of, because we're dedicated to it, it becomes a part of that yearly budgeting process, you've just installed now your own discipline on yourself. And it's lawful. So that's, that's the beauty of it. You are right in the sense, though, Your Honor, that it's a serious matter, that we're going to see a flat. And this is where, you know, the road meets the road on a political level. Us, you know, I'm on the policy committee with the, with LEAGUE. I mean, we, us going to the state and saying, "Hey, what are you doing? I don't think you realize what you're doing to us and everybody else." Because we're going to see flat growth in valuation for two years solid. Maybe even negative growth. We don't know. Unless you get way high up in there, in the six to seven point, you probably will see negative impact on growth. And their bet is, is, as you point out correctly, is that three years down the road, you've seen three years of valuation growth. Okay, now we'll all start off at, at square one, where I'll level playing field. Maybe that won't be the case. We don't know. It depends on which city you're living in, how much a portion of that city's tax base is based on, on business and commercial taxation. But you're right in pointing out, we need to be cautious. We did build into this whole scenario, though, that flat growth. So we, we knew it was coming, pretty much. We went ahead and planned for it regardless.
Yeah. And, you know, just to add to that, you know, what, what you're looking at is setting up a short-term borrowing that allows the council, over the next six months, to, to make the long-term decisions, the belt tightening that's going to have to take place when you're looking at your city budget. You're not going to be able to look... You're not gonna be able to look at this on an annual basis. You're gonna, you know, as part of the process, we're gonna be looking five years out on your operating budget, making sure you know the decisions that come into play when you decide, well, we're gonna, we're gonna raise salaries, whatever it might be, if it's X level, know how that's gonna affect your budget, what it's gonna squeeze, what are gonna be the, you know, for lack of better terms, the bending points for the council in making decisions. That's all gonna come into play. That's being addressed in what I'd call the intermediate phase. You know, I'd call this short-term phase. You're gonna have an intermediate phase where you're gonna have to take a hard look in the mirror and ask ourselves, who are we gonna be? Are we gonna be a city that operates going forward with substantial, substantially more fiscal discipline as far as shoring up fund balances, making sure everything has an identified payment repayment source on any sort of capital project? And then going forward, setting that up on a five-year rolling basis. Long-term, you're gonna implement that plan. It's going to be a different city of Fairfield. This is step one in moving to more financial stability. This isn't to, you know, by any means throw stones at any past management. The city has done a nice job of operating. You've had different blips on the radar, things you've had to address, different budget stressors, but you've operated within your means for the most part. This just sets you up for more success down the road as far as the intermediate plan. This initial step, while, yeah, it's painful, but yeah, if you wanna pay this off without affecting and planning for perhaps a decline in valuation, then by all means, you can do that. You can make those decisions. That's gonna be on an operating level. These aren't gonna go away just magically without that pain either way.
But I think it's important to point out, in the midst of this stuff, there's a lot of language going on here. It's important to point out that key to us not having this effect, the property taxes in the city, is that lost, us coming out with that referendum in November that says that the city's local option sales tax is for property tax relief, because that's exactly what it means right there. Being able to use that in the budget in a different manner, $200,000 worth that we've got replaced already, built into what, where it should have been, the fee of the utility. But it's a key point for us to drive that home to our citizens. We failed in this referendum, you know, then we've got, we've gotta look at some other players in the game. One of those is the debt levy regarding this debt. And I'm not saying you don't shuffle yearly between a little more debt levy taking up and a little more sales taxes one year or the other. It's almost a Peter Paul or six inches, half a foot kind of issue when you look at all the funding in the budget, right? But it matters that we have that sales tax free to do so, because if we don't, flexibility's not there, it's out the window. Now the chips are fewer. Gotta have the sales taxes.
Lots of conversation, I know. The next page is really just a whole lot of numbers, and you do need to bring out bifocals, magnifying glasses, whatever it might be, to look at this. But what you're looking at here, and by the way, I did provide this to Kevin electronically, so you can get it on your iPads and blow it up as big as you want to see it. What we tried to do here with this is look, what took place when there was fund consolidation? So if you look at the old accounts down the left, this would have been how the city's treasures report looked at the end of fiscal 10 and at the end of fiscal 11. You had all these funds delineated. The council, on a monthly basis, saw these deficits. They were aware of them, what they looked like. And then you see after consolidation, that section at the top where now you're all of a sudden reduced to about 15 different funds. And, you know, what this does is simply mask the underlying issue that you have capital projects that have drawn down the overall fund balance of the city. By all means, you could operate this way. However, what you end up doing in this place is you've completely eliminated the liquidity of the city. And the things that you're looking at is you have, especially with the possible valuation change, you're limited on your levies for the general fund. If all of a sudden, you've rolled 1.75 million or 1.9 million of capital projects into your general fund, what you've done is you've eliminated the city's ability to operate. You've decreased all of your fund balance. In this case, you're actually using lost money to cover on a cash-by-cash basis your general operating fund, which is not something you wanna do long-term. You wanna be able to let each fund stand on its own, and if it's not standing on its own, then you know why, and you can investigate reasons and solutions for moving forward. All this illustration is, is it's not perfect. It doesn't tie out perfectly, but it's very close. If you look at the middle columns, you see as of June 30th of 11, and as of June 30th of 11, that's how the crossover took place. So you have more backup data now. This is part of the exercise that we've been going through this spring, and it hasn't been real easy. But that being said, any questions, kind of overall financial picture, before we kind of move a little more quickly through some of the financing?
I do have a question. Kevin, when, after all this is sorted out and things are set right again with all the funds and everything, when will we start seeing these reports on a regular basis?
Like your weekly, or your monthly reports before I meet?
Right.
Well, shortly after the beginning of the new fiscal.
Okay.
We have two of our people are going to train, clerk training, of course, for the first week in July. Second week in July, so it'd probably be about August, beginning of August meetings, or the second meeting in August, whenever we do our, you know, your monthly.
So then we'll see it on a monthly basis?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
It'll look very similar to this with all the different funds and...
Yeah, I'll have all your key...
It won't be that many.
Yeah, it won't be that many. We exhausted you.
You're cleaning up about 20 of those.
Yeah, exactly.
With everything that's current.
Your key phones, yeah.
And it'll be, it'll be like where we are percentage of year-to-date with the budget and that sort of thing. It'll be kind of a...
Spent percentage spent year-to-date, yeah. And you'll be able to see a couple of years before in comparison to that, too.
And we will?
Yeah, and then we're gonna...
Even though this has been sort of messed up with...
Yeah, it's on the sheets.
Travis has reservations about that.
We hope, it'll be tough.
Well, I guess, that's an eventuality. That would be next year, because this budget year, because we just fixed ENCODE recently, so this budget year will be your base year, starting for the next five, because five years show up on there, I think, four to five years a piece on each sheet. And then we'll do the grass as well, showing you the grass, so you can kinda, in a quick way, wanna be able to scan that and say, wait a second, I'm halfway through the year and I'm 70% spent, what does that mean and why?
Right. Okay.
Just to also, just to add, you know, the mayor has suggested that we look at some policies for dealing with fund deficits, you know, overall and general, instead of just kicking the can down the road constantly. So the ways and means are planning to meet soon about this and bring some proposals to the council to consider, some putting, you know, firm policies into place.
Yeah, we've got about 10 to 20, and they'll range from everything to credit card use to if you were to run deficits, how do you do that? Because no one here is saying it's a bad idea to run a deficit. Sometimes it can be a good idea. Something happens ad hoc and you simply must do that this year, or you're gonna lose this $400,000 grant that came out of the blue. There's a lot of different things that can happen that make an ad hoc deficit a good idea. But we're gonna have a policy that says, if that occurs, here's what you gotta do.
Tie it to revenue sources.
Tying it to a revenue stream down, you know, at some point definitive. Exactly. For instance, I mean, there are 10 to 20 of these, so. And whichever ones the council wants to pick out of the list that we provided as proposals would be good. But they're meat and potatoes stuff, and many governments are doing them already.
And we can give you 45 to 50 if you really wanna weigh...
Exactly. One can have hundreds, but it gets a little tedious, you know, and you really tie your own hands as much as we did with the flexibility or revenue stuff. Don't wanna tie your hands too much, but you want things that are basic, fundamental, pragmatic, and prudent.
The next section, you know, you've seen this, I've outlined this a few different times, and it's just kind of outlining a plan of finance going forward. And the idea is, you have a checklist, a mental list of the things that, you know, we're working at with the city, and we'll kind of keep this going. This is gonna be an ongoing basis, you're gonna see this. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time going through it. You know, the obvious thing is, you know, going forward, having more transparency as far as management, council, and council feedback back to management, so that you guys are able to make efficient decisions on how you handle your operating budget going forward and giving you some tools to be able to do that. So we're gonna assist the city as needed with that. Overall, you know, there's a couple of different items, obviously, on the back burner. If you guys haven't heard, obviously, you're looking at a significant swimming pool indoor rec facility. Those things are all coming over the next couple of years, and financing and tax impact is all gonna have to be looked at, and the way that it fits in, the way that the budget of the project fits, is all gonna have to be reviewed in light of all the policies and the operating budget decisions. So all that being said, all those things are on our radar. We're working with the city as far as planning the different avenues for, you know, the one trick will be, I guess I'll say trick, but it's, you know, the one piece that's out there will be, obviously, the significant portion of the project is funded with donations. And being able to capitalize those dollars upfront to meet a construction timeline is going to be one of the issues that the city will have to work. Council needs to understand the risk that are involved with that as well. So we'll help communicate that as you get closer to that project. You know, overall, you know, there's some long-term things that are being implemented. There's a few different things that will still take place this fiscal year so that you can go into 2013 with a much cleaner audit than you currently have. I'm gonna kind of skip through the next couple of pages. I will point out one thing, that being that due to the recent rate reset with the Iowa Finance Authority on your water revenue bonds, the city will be saving $273,000 when you adopt that resolution. I think Mark is working on that for the first meeting in July. So that'll be effective as well. So one piece of good news through all this, $273,000 of savings over the next, it's essentially the next 10 years, so there is some relief there as well. I comment in jest a little bit. You know, the next piece, starting on page 11, there's a cover sheet, just kind of goes into your preliminary participant package that went out to the financial institutions. What we've looked at with this financing is the short-term, three-year financing. This is the, gives the city a lot of flexibility. One, you have not locked in, committed to any sort of levy repayment, so your other repayment sources can be taken into account. Any sort of assets that can be disposed and applied to this debt, as well as different abatement streams, maybe from special assessments, can be applied during this first three-year period of maturity on the loan. From that time, you'll be looking at taking out long-term financing, and hopefully, at that time, with a credit rating that is restored to prior levels. So that is kind of the goal going forward with this financing, is a three-year financing. It's going to be placed with your local bank, a new local bank for the city, Pilot Grove Savings Bank at 2.4%. So that's a taxable rate, taxable financing, locked in last week ahead of all the bond market blow-up, so that's, I guess you would say, a good thing. I imagine if you were locking in the rate tomorrow, your rate would be higher. So the fact that you got the proposal in hand is definitely better than half of a bird in the bush, or however the analogy plays out in this case.
One bird Yankee in the bush.
Yes, yeah, exactly. So with this, on page 18, there's the sources and uses of funds. There'll be $1.9 million of bond proceeds, cost of issuance, and deposit into the project fund. So the project fund alleviates the deficit as well as covers all the interest cost on the bond anticipation note. So the way it'll work is the city will deposit the 1.9 million into the fund. That fund will make the interest payments on this debt, as well as pay for cost of issuance. Cost of issuance right now is slightly overstated. What you're looking at is legal cost, placement cost with the bank, as well as covering the financial planning work that's taken place to date with Piper Jaffray. Your bond debt service schedule is on the next page. One thing I will point out, these, half of the bond becomes callable at year one, the other half becomes callable year two. This wasn't quite as flexible as we had originally hoped, but the trade-off would have been that you would have had to pay an interest rate of 2.75% to be able to have it all callable in year one. At that rate differential, I felt that it was not in the city's best interest, and I think Kevin agreed when we had a conversation about it. The thing that'll allow you to do is, if you are willing and wanting to lock this into long-term debt at year one, and you've had a restored credit rating at that point in time, my advice would be that you go back to the same bank and ask them to restructure the debt. What this does is, they're a financial institution trying to make a profit. So the ability that they're gonna get taken out of their loan at year one without some guarantee of return meant that you would need to pay that higher rate. So if you're able to go back to them at year one and redo the loan with them into a long-term debt, I'm sure that would be a much preferred situation. I can't say for certain that they would agree to that, but most banks will have a willingness to work with you regarding that.
And considering where we're at, I did, from what we had been considering, it didn't look like we were gonna pay off more than 50% in one year anyway, or, you know, in year one. So it seemed like a no-brainer on that level.
Yep. Any questions regarding financing? Page 20, then, is just a few key takeaways that I have. Implementing the financial plan involves working towards greater financial stability. And that's kind of a no-brainer comment. But, you know, as a city, sitting in your shoes, you know, you've had to deal with some management turnover, some cards that were dealt your way that weren't necessarily your decisions. You've also had to deal with some ongoing capital project deficits, some audit work that might not have been quite as transparent or as investigative as maybe we would have, the city would have liked to have seen regarding some of the statements that were made and the disclosures that were made. That being said, you know, keeping this in perspective, you know, this is the first step in moving forward. This is not to paint a black X over the city by any means. It's just simply recognizing that we can operate more efficiently from a financial transparency standpoint and getting your buy-in to kind of move forward on this. There's work that's going to be done, comprehensive financial policies, a fully-developed five-year capital plan, and a five-year budget projection tool. Those are gonna be very valuable for the city going forward. Implementing this financial plan is going to provide a response to the rating agency that you are serious about moving forward. Given no other records, they gave you your bond rating downgrade based on your fiscal 11 audit. Your fiscal 12 audit looks worse if you were to just look at the general fund in the way that it was reported. This is a step that says, we're moving forward, we recognize the concerns you have, and we're moving forward to address them. I think this is a positive step in doing so. You know, recent indication, you know, we've worked with multiple cities who have dealt with financial issues. Some have been unwilling to step up and say, well, we're gonna be fiscally prudent, we're gonna get out of this, and adopt policies that restrict what we're going to do. The result from the rating agencies at that standpoint is to say that the city is frankly out of control, that they're not going to address that, they're not going to respond to our comments, we're not going to continue to apply an investment-grade rating to that city. Other cities have looked at their issues, some much larger than yours, and said, well, we're gonna tackle it, we recognize there's gonna be multiple steps involved, but we are gonna do the right thing as far as adopting policies, adopting a five-year budget, having a working capital plan for five years. And the credit rating agencies will buy into that. They will give you the benefit of the doubt at times. If you burn their trust in multiple years, then they might be less willing to give you the benefit of the doubt. But we recently worked with a city who was facing similar issues. Their bond rating downgrade could have been substantial. They did receive a bond rating downgrade, but it was a bond rating downgrade that the city actually celebrated, given the situation that they were in. So this is moving forward. You know, action items tonight, you know, they seem unrelated to this, you know, long-term financial picture, but it is an important piece. You're moving forward, you're making the commitment to finance your reimbursement for capital projects. For your action items tonight, you have appointing a paying agent on the new bond issue, and then authorizing the issue of the bond anticipation notes. There's also a couple of items from Piper Jaffray. One is an engagement letter that simply outlines, you know, how we'll treat the ongoing underwriting of bonds with the city, as well as how we will work with you on capital improvement planning. There's a second item that's disclosure-related, and alls it is is simply stuff that is required to be disclosed based on SEC rules. So please read that for your understanding and ultimate approval. This time, I guess I'll take any questions. I know that was a long presentation and a lot of time, but I did wanna, as always, keep giving you more of the financial picture that we know and allow you to ask any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Travis?
We've already asked him quite a few, but any more?
Yep. Yep.
I don't have any questions. Travis supplied me with some information from the questions I had at our June 18 meeting, and I appreciate you doing that. I think it made a little better understanding of when you were talking about what our flat levy rate will be over the next several years, and how that will work, and how we would prefer to have a decreasing levy structure, but with the situation that we're in, I don't see how we can do that.
Yeah, I mean, there are significant hurdles going forward based on, you know, the debt structure of the city, but not anything that can't be managed through.
I don't have any questions either. I just wanted to comment that when I first heard the proposal weeks back, it was a little concerning for us to carry this much debt, short-term, and yet I realize that it's really gotta be done, that by making this action tonight, we do bind ourselves to greater fiscal responsibility, and really focusing on our needs and not so much our wants, till we get things that we've already done paid off, and then we can look ahead to new projects. I'm really glad we're doing a five-year budget and plan for the future, and planning for new capital projects. And just to make the point in case the public forgets what we were talking about, we're doing this tonight because we want this done before the end of this fiscal year. So going into fiscal year that starts in July, we'll have a much cleaner budget, and that'll help our bond rating, which will in turn save us on interest in our loans in the future.
I just have a question, Travis, about the five-year plan. Is that something that you...or maybe I'll ask Kevin this. Is this something we're gonna ask Piper Jaffray to help us assist with developing this five-year plan?
Yes, Your Honor. We actually engaged...I think maybe shortly after I got here, we...I threw this at council, and we came through ways and means and talked about doing it, and then we did engage with Piper Jaffray for just an incredibly cheap price for the expertise that we're getting. And we have been engaged in that, but I understand the...that's kind of like...because we had to move away from it, you know, to get into this, and to get over this hump, and to really analyze all this stuff, so we could bring the information we brought to bear in these sheets. And we thought, you know, when we get over that, we get over the next fiscal year beginning, that's when we need to really, you know, heavily engage with that. So we're gonna have other meetings, I would say, probably there again, and probably late August, I'm going home, back to Georgia, the last week and first week in August, and last week in July. Some others, I think, are gonna be missing, but we're hoping sometime, at least by September, to heavily engage with our department heads again on that level about that five-year capital improvement plan, which is so essential to us, even more so now with the change in taxation, but very essential in any case for us to be able to move forward and kind of know what our fluid money is every year, on a fundamental level yearly for the next five years. In other words, if there are ad hoc things, we'll know going ahead to some degree, a better degree than we ever have, how much of that kind of money we do have per year, and we can anticipate having per year. And that's really important for a city like ourselves, because we are growing, we do have a lot of different things that come up that are really important for our community. A city of 10,000 is...there's a lot of things that can pop up that can be very significant that we wouldn't want to opt to do. So, and then we also have some conversations coming up. Once we put Logan out there about those funds, we'll be coming up with some proposals regarding those funds, as far as what's gonna be used on a debt-abatement level, what should be used on a operational level going forward in this next fiscal year. So, there's...to be continued, I would say, but this is the fundamental, critical step we had to take before the next fiscal, so that we can restate balances in that 2013 audit with the state that we're engaging with, and which our...by the way, our bid for that came in very close to what we'd had for the last two years with a private industry partner. So, that's good news, and so it looks good going forward if we act tonight.
If there's no further discussion on this point, then we can move ahead with our resolutions?
Correct.
So, the first resolution is to appoint Bankers Trust Company of Des Moines to serve as the paying agent, note registrar, and transfer agent, and then also to approve them as...approve the paying agent and note registrar and transfer agent agreement, authorizing and authorizing the execution of that agreement. We have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Rasmussen. Please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Next, we have a resolution authorizing the issuance of $1.9 million in taxable general obligation bond anticipation project notes, series 2013A. Do we have a resolution for approval?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Hallie, second by Hamilton. Please call the roll.
Hallie?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Next is an action item to approve the engagement letter with Piper Jaffray. We have a motion.
So moved.
By Hamilton?
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
And next is the acknowledgement of the disclosure required for issuing bonds.
Move to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's called acknowledged disclosure. So it's...we are...
You're good.
We're recognizing that this knowledge, this acknowledgement disclosure has been...I mean, this disclosure has been made to us.
Yeah, yeah.
We are acknowledging the fact that this...
Acknowledging the receipt of the disclosure, correct.
Move to acknowledge.
Moved by Hallie, second by Hamilton. Please call the roll.
Hallie?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Travis, I believe that completes our business with you. Any other points for us?
You will receive this money on Friday, so in order to do so, I will be swinging back...I have a meeting in southeast Iowa tomorrow, and swinging back through to pick up documents tomorrow afternoon, and shuttle those back to your bond attorney tomorrow afternoon, so.
Enjoy your drive.
Thanks, Travis.
Thank you, Travis.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Part-time courier. My rates are...
Okay, moving on. We have next a resolution regarding tax abatement application for 1212 CODI Circle. Kevin, you wanna lead us through that?
Yes, Your Honor, this is for Catherine Elsie.
Els.
Els, sorry. I don't know if she is here.
Yes.
Would you like to come up?
She's the one that corrected you on her. I didn't know I had to speak. They just said I had to be here.
Oh, you don't have to. You're welcome to.
I don't know what you want me to say.
If you just wanna explain.
I've invested in Fairfield, and I've built a new home, so.
God bless you.
And I took advantage of the statement that was in my water bill last fall, to apply for tax abatement.
Smart.
That's pretty much it.
Very good.
This would be under the residential abatement that we recently created, so.
Is the house now complete?
Yes, moved in at the end of March.
Is it really great?
Yeah, except for the yard. There's a lot of dirt. The rain has not helped.
Sure.
Not much mowing, though.
No, but I was told before the seed would go down that the weeds have to go. And just, if nobody else knows, the lot south of me just sold, and they're breaking ground next week.
Very good.
So the development, I think, is off. There'll be three houses probably by this time next year.
Very nice.
To help with your tax situation.
Happy to contribute.
Just in time, Catherine.
The time that this helps you.
All right. We have a motion to approve the bid.
Move to approve.
Second.
I'll go with...motion by Hammers.
There you go.
And we'll do second by Rasmussen. Please call the roll.
Hammers?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Thank you, Catherine. Enjoy your house.
Thank you very much, my children.
Great. Next, we have an action item awarding the Liberty Road, Libertyville Road and Highway 1 sewer project. Yes, Melanie.
Good evening. I'm gonna go over your next three items, but I believe the last one we're going to table for tonight, but a general overview on the three projects. These are three projects that your department heads came to me that they already had in their...they had in their budget, and I was assisting them with getting the permit since they are water and sewer construction. And because of the scope of the projects, we did informal quotes rather than a formal bidding process with a lot of specs and paperwork attached to it. So on the Libertyville Road, Highway 1 Sewer Project Extension, this is 442 feet. It takes us from kind of southeast of the dialysis center, extends across Libertyville Road to the proposed Casey's site. And so that is the purpose of the sewer. Those quotes were sent out via a new process that the sewer department is working on for small projects like this. They send it out by email. They have a standard performance bond that they're starting to use. It was a new process for the sewer department. So we sent it out to eight local contractors via email, and the quotes were turned in to City Hall on June 19. There were three bids...or quotes received. Low bid was from Drish Construction of Fairfield for $31,948. The second was Bob Brown, also Fairfield, for $37,510. And the third quote was from Kenney &amp; Sons of Mount Pleasant for $58,133. The other thing I wanted to note is because this work is gonna be wrapped into the urban renewal district that we're working on, this work cannot start until the urban renewal district is established, and it was outlined in the information to the contractors. They understood that. So this work will be starting about the time the hospital gets their yard cleaned up from their current project. Expect middle of August with a completion date September 30. So I would recommend awarding the bid to Drish Construction of Fairfield.
We have a recommendation. We have a motion.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Hallie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? Motion passes. Next one, Melanie.
Okay, the next one is for a water project. It includes 1,570 feet of water main on Seventh Street, Jefferson Avenue, and then another section on Hempstead from B to D. I guess any special notes about the project is it also has a September 30 completion date, and we did note that the contractor was not allowed to work during the week of RagBri, and...or the week before RagBri, because Carl doesn't wanna deal with...no, I shouldn't say Carl. Nobody wants to deal with a water main break that week. And then also, any pavement that is torn up, not sidewalks, but any pavement in the street that's torn up, has to be replaced prior to that week, so that we don't have extra potholes for the list to deal with. This was sent out to six contractors via mail, and we had three returned. The low bed was Crossiron of Fairfield for $93,390.60. Second was Drish Construction of Fairfield for $104,201.75. And the third quote was from Bob Brown of Fairfield for $116,810. So my recommendation would be to award that to Crossiron.
Why do you think this one came in so much under the engineer's estimate?
I think a lot of it is that you had your local contractors competing against each other, really sharpening their pencils for this work. It's also a really flexible timeframe they have from now until September, and because they're local, they can squeeze it in with their other work. I used a project that Drish had just been awarded as a basis of this, and Drish had cut their numbers even from a project that they were just recently awarded. So I think your department heads had great foresight to get your local people competing against each other.
And as well, they're meeting at sites. They're meeting at the sites where the jobs are doing onsite meetings with all potential bidders are invited to those meetings, so there's a lot more communication going on there, which is kind of a hugely important thing.
Melanie, perhaps you said this before, how do we decide who the potential bidders are?
On the sewer side of things, I would say that Sean is developing...Sean and Darrell are developing a list of, for lack of a better term, pre-approved contractors, contractors that they've worked with, that show that they have bonding capacity to do small jobs within the city. And so that's how the sewer list was developed. For the water, we chose, I believe there's...I can read who all we sent to them, but one, two, three, four...four of the contractors from Fairfield that do pipe work, and then Shipley Construction was another that we selected because they've done a lot of pipe work within the city. And the fourth was G.R. Miller of Washington, which they did the Second Street water job, so they've recently bid, and that's...we basically selected contractors that have recently bid projects that we've been happy with their work, and so we selected those six to participate.
But that fulfills the legal requirements of putting per bid, the way we've done it, I guess.
Yeah, you're only required to...you're actually only required to ask three under the bidding laws.
So you can ask anybody you want.
Yeah.
We assembled a list of all our local contractors and are doing the email format, you know, emailing out to all those guys, just to let everybody know. We've kind of...we've expanded the amount of contractors who are getting exposure to our bids now than before this year. So at this point, there's a much larger list that are getting that exposure.
Okay.
One suggestion.
Larger projects in the future, though. We won't be able to use this particular type of method, will we?
Correct.
Over 100.
The current bidding law is 130.
It actually went up a little bit, yeah.
Oh, that's distinctive. Okay.
You have a 47,000 is a three bid. I think it used to be 47,000.
Something around there.
I pretty much...we encourage three bids, anything over $2,000, you know, dollars roughly, but...
But anything over 130,000 would have to have public notice and...
Closed bids.
Closed bid, sealed bid.
Correct.
Situation.
Okay.
And these were sealed bid. They were just...they didn't require the public notice.
Solided.
Yeah. The, for example, the resurfacing job that we'll be bringing to your attention next council meeting would be one that's done through a more of a public bid process.
So we talked about this a little bit, but the only thing that I would suggest next time that we have, like, projects like this, that we also give contractors an opportunity to bid them as a package, because I think that we get some more fiscally responsible bids with that kind of system, too. It's an option, and they don't have to, and we don't have to take it, but we can see individual and a package price.
Good idea.
Yep.
One quick question.
Insight from our contractor.
You have these little asterisks. Is that the plural for asterisk?
I guess.
Asterces.
Yeah. Next to a couple of the items on the Crossiron, then it says, "Indicates error in submitted quote." What is that referring to?
The way that our specs read out, that we take the unit price times the quantity to get the amount, and that governs even if the amount that's listed there or listed on their bid is different. So what I believe happened, for example, the ductile iron fittings, item number three, they multiplied $2.40 times 600 pounds and came up with, let's say, $2,000 instead of $1,440.
So that's corrected?
That is corrected. Bits. Yeah.
All right. Any other questions from Melanie? They would entertain a motion to approve the low bid here for Crossiron excavating.
So moved.
So again, what we'll do, Hammers and second by Hamilton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, the same sign? Project awarded to Crossiron. And then the last one, Melanie, did you say we're not gonna cover it tonight, isn't it?
I would request to pull that from the agenda, Your Honor.
That's fine with me.
Yep.
Okay.
We'd like a little bit more time to look at the bids and talk with the department heads on that one.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mel.
The last action item tonight is a discussion of easement for mounted electrical service boxes at 51 West Broadway.
Yes, Your Honor, from the start of the RagBri, we had been looking at one key component on our downtown level regarding power, and our need for more of it is typical. So we had, number one, we were replacing, as part of what we've been doing, we've been replacing our boxes that we use. In each quadrant of the square downtown, you have four in-ground boxes, electrical boxes. We pull our power in the winter and stuff from that for the lights. We have been replacing those as part of this project. All those will be new boxes wired to 2009 electrical code, which will probably be a little bit safer than the ones before, they had a little bit of age on them. And then we were also looking at what started off as a temporary and later in our minds kind of became a permanent establishment of significant power for events downtown of different sorts, whether it be RagBri or recently Fairfax or whatever else we might be doing. The first inclination was to go to a gentleman on the south side of the square, where there is a building that is open there. Our understanding of it was that he had plans for that opening, perhaps a building of a new building to fill that space, so that was out of the question. Then we went, we ended up on the north end of the square, down what's, I guess commonly known as Art Alley. Paul Glossop has a building there on, if you're walking north on Art Alley, it'll be on the left. You go about midway down the alley, there's a power pole on the left there, and there's a couple of windows on his building. Between our power pole and those windows is where this easement would be. We'd be mounting two 200-amp boxes there on a permanent level. This is what is called a building facade easement. It's literally an easement on the facade of a building. So we actually have one there already for, I think, a power pole presently.
Street line.
A street line, I'm sorry. Right now. But in this case, we would have another one for these two 200-amp boxes. We would be responsible for any damage that might have occurred to the stucco. I'm not so sure that metal lattice was used when the stucco was originally applied to, maybe applied straight to brick, it's kind of hard to say right now, but if some cracking occurs, well, of course, we will fix that. And we also have agreed to put up a bit of a blind, a little bit of a fence blind that looks aesthetically pleasing, because it is Art Alley. And that is what this easement is about.
So the point is that we would pay him $1,500 as an initial payment to
We would.
Establish this easement, and then we would pay him a dollar a year after that.
One of those perpetuity-type easements, Paul was very, very easy to deal with on this, and it would be a 1,500, one-time payment of $1,500 followed by a dollar yearly, basically in perpetuity. And the establishment would stay there, and you'll go across the street taping down the power lines across the street and have a distribution box, so.
At one time, you discussed putting power in Central Park.
Yes. Power is in the park. I was discussing changing it a little bit
Right.
And bringing in towers. And once we got out there and we started looking at it, Pam and I were talking about it, Derek and I were talking about it, when you're talking about, it's just, that's just too dangerous. It's so many towers, because it's four quadrants or four boxes per quadrant, it was just like, we're going to have towers. It's not, you know, there again, aesthetically, that's not the best alternative, not the safest alternative, little kids, older people. So we decided to stick with the boxes that are attached to the caps. So you pull off the regular cap, and then you have a power box with a cap attached to the rear of it, and it just goes in normally like it was the cap. So that is, we decided that was a much more smart way of doing it, probably a better way for us, less impediments to travel within the square during events.
But then whoever is having an event would be responsible for the cords. We're not providing cords to those events.
Typically, no. We are kind of talking about the creation of a permanent box. I have done so twice in the past for a park situation like this, where you produced, you made a box, you got electrician to create you a distribution box on, across the street, you know, for actually running out wires, and you had it. And then whenever you had an event, all you had to do is bring that up there and pop that into the larger box, mount it to a wall, and you're good to go. Don't know if we're going to do that or not, or go per event and, you know, go where the cutoff is. Hard to say right now, it's financial, really, it's money. Because the boxes themselves, some of that's being absorbed by the RagBri budget, some of it's being absorbed by our own city budget. I mean, I don't know right now the entire impact, but some of it will be absorbed by some of our city budget this year on those boxes. Of course, they're for us, and we use them for our Christmas lights and many, many other events.
So what is the bid for this work?
The bid for the work? Do we have a bid for the work? I don't think we've seen a bid. We're getting bidders, I guess, and meeting them right now to look at it, to do bids for the work. But I don't have a bid yet. I just, this is just the easement to be able to get it done, you know?
Okay.
To be able to do it.
I was, I did not know RagBri was going to pay for part of this.
We have an electrical committee and electrical budget.
Very little in that budget, though.
Well, that's what we have, and
Yeah.
And the upgrades on the square, from my understanding, completely necessary. When I was running live on the square back in 2009, I was told repeatedly by the electrician who set up our sound system that that was outdated and dangerous
Oh.
And needed to be replaced, so that's
There, yeah.
That's important.
Couple of nice mouse families were living in a few of them.
But just to, just to, for my own thinking, we're setting up this main service in mid-block, half a block away from the square, so how do we get, so how do we get the power to where we're going to use it?
Waterproof lines would come out of there and be taped to the ground going across that crosswalk. At Art Walk, they'd be taped to the ground securely, and they would run across into that. This is for like bands and things like that. Your music boxes will be just as they always were. They're wired.
Right. It's already there.
Yeah. And these are two different costs, the boxes versus these two larger 200-amp boxes, you know?
And the boxes that you're talking about that would be north will run, I believe, to the stage, which is going to be set up
Yeah.
Right there, so.
So you're talking about doing this before RagBri?
We are getting it.
But you don't have any cost yet for that?
For the electrical box, the in-ground boxes on the quadrant level in the square, we do. But for this, these 200-amp boxes, we're just, we just decided this last week and brought this agenda item forward pretty quickly because of RagBri. Yeah. Essential get her done kind of thing, but
But you don't have any concept of what it's going to cost?
Well, I've got a concept of what it's going to cost.
Okay, so what is the concept?
Of course, we always have that. I would say it'd be anywhere from $5,000 to $10,000.
Wow.
Yep, depending on who you got to do it and on a commercial level, obviously.
So whose budget's that coming out of?
Yours.
Yeah, we're going to work, we're going to work on that. That's, part of that's probably going to be coming out of that park and rec budget, parks budget, essentially. Part of that'll be offset by some anticipated revenues this year. I believe we're going to see some insurance anticipated revenue. And I believe we're going to see, well, you know, we have sales tax after the beginning of the year, too, some of our own sales tax, although I wanted to see if I could get some other revenue to qualify for it before that.
Insurance revenue from what?
The vestiture payment we got last year may happen again this year, quite likely will happen again this year with ICAP. And that was $18,000, so.
And also, don't forget the $3, $3.5, $4 million economic impact of the event that will boost our local option sales tax. So I think whatever the investment the city is making in this event and ongoing will be returned. And if we get RagBri again in five years, that's another $3 to $4 million, so.
Yeah, and Fairfax.
Try to set aside, so, yeah, and other community events like this. So I think it's a worthwhile investment. I don't think Derek Mine's taking that out of his budget. All right, maybe not.
He's kind of still sore at me. He's still sore at me a little bit.
He's not saying nothing, all right.
But, you know, Fairfax will be on the square next year, so.
$10,000 plus this $1,500.
$10,000 plus this $1,500 plus whatever the cost for those 200-amp boxes in that exercise is.
Wasn't that
Another $5 to $10.
Right, that's what I
Another $5 to $10, yeah.
What's other 10?
The in-ground boxes in the quadrants of the square, in the ground, you know, our in-ground boxes, that effort was about 8 to 10. And then, still going on, don't know the complete cost, around 8 to 10, we were quoted, I think. And then this, the 200-amp box effort would be about 5 to 10, and then the $1,500.
So are you talking about $20,000?
Almost.
Is that what you're talking about, this year?
Likely almost that much on impact. It's a lot of electrical work, you're talking about 16 boxes, and all the electrical items that go into them, and then you're all, the 200-amp boxes and all that material, and there's some, you know, you have to put them, it's going to be amassed involved in that and all that effort with the power company. I mean, I would hope that it would come in around $5,200 or something like that, but electricians, you know, average hourly rate for electrician's going to be $130 an hour at least on a good day. I know, I did that, too. But if you, if you look down the road on a big picture level, we could not, we simply couldn't leave the, in the ground, the park boxes like that. Those park boxes were antiquated, and they were rat's nests, and they were dangerous. And these 200-amp boxes going forward in the future, every event that's on the square that's major will use them, and they're, they're going to be done pro, to code, no dangers or, you know, anything there, no worries about having to access this and having to access that. We'll never scramble like we're doing for this RagBri exercise again. Fairfax could be 30,000 people in two years. RagBri a year. Now, the economic impact of that is huge, but we got to be prepared for that, and we got to have the power for that, and who knows what other
So when you string these cords across a road, are you having people drive over these?
You could if you wanted to.
Okay, but that, I mean...
They'll be taped down to the ground.
So who's responsible for those cords? Because my concern is, if we're not maintaining those, that's a hazard. I mean, if you're stringing cords across that, I mean, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, oh, I do, they're pretty tough. I mean, they're all-weather cords are
I know, they're very tough, but
Well, yeah. But yeah, sometimes you, in some cases, people are, the city's going to make a pack. I made a pack in my former city, but we didn't have to go across the road. So we may say, we make the box, others have to supply a fee or whatever for the line, you know, but who's using it besides Art Walk? I mean, it might pay for the city to get the, get the box and the lines established to go back to the main box, you know? It might be a thing for us to do, especially it's not going to cost that much money, but by the foot, those cords are extremely expensive.
Well, I mean, can we look
Many dollars a foot.
Can we look at tapping it under the street?
We can look at that, and I've got, I've actually, on my porch, my wife gave me, I'm going to give her credit here, we're on TV, I was going to take it, but I decided not to. But we were talking last night, and there came an interesting idea about some of our underground lines, some of our old sewer lines underground, because we're abandoning some of these in some of the projects we're doing.
Sewer line.
Exactly. A very smart man who worked for Atlanta Gaslight Company in the 1990s had an idea. They were going to take up all their old infrastructure and replace it. He had a very ingenious idea, which was, no, this is an old, this is no gas line, this is conduit. And they ran micro, you know, they ran fiber all around Atlanta doing that. I've been thinking about this in terms of our sewer line, that 1924 line we're going to replace, but are we? Because if we ran fiber through that with an arrangement with the local provider that might want to do that and paid us a handsome fee to do so, that would provide that fiber extension further out of the city that we could grow out to. If we put our sewer line outside of that line, we'd be further out already so that we could grow out easier with our
Okay, you're getting off
Can I bring you back down to
Sorry. Yeah, I'm vision questioning here, but
It's a great vision.
Yes, we can go underground with that.
Thanks, Kevin. No, this is interesting discussion.
I've got a specific question about this easement.
Go ahead.
Is this in agreement with Paul Glossop as the owner of the building?
This is, we'll go with the building.
With the building.
Just like a property easement in this perpetuity.
Just making sure in case the property owner changed.
Yeah.
Have to do this again.
If it does, that owner now owns our easement.
Great.
Any more discussion about the easement specifically? Then entertain a motion for approval?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Moved by Hallie, second by Hamilton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Okay. Moving on. Do we have anything in the city attorney report tonight, John?
We just had
Thank you. We have some report from the environmental committee?
Yes. It's kind of a funny situation, not something that either Jessica and I are really super comfortable with, but something that are, it's like we're really down on our former administrator tonight, but an agreement that our former city administrator had made with the property owner, owns property adjacent to the new Walmart, and it has to do with stormwater runoff. And essentially, the agreement was in writing that the city would cover a third of the cost to, it's already been done, the work has already been done, to create a dry streambed to divert the water that runs off onto this property. I think that's too much. I think it sets a bad precedent, but our hands were tied. It was already agreed, and we didn't want to go back on the word of our previous city manager. So Kevin, you want to go into any more detail?
Well, essentially, in this case, I would recommend doing this payment of $5,000 because in good faith, it's our good faith and credit. And when representatives of the city are out making agreements with folk, I try to always remind folks that we're talking about making this agreement, much as we did in Vedic City, for instance, we're talking about making this agreement, guys, but we're going to be taking this to committee, we're going to be taking it to council. I mean, you know, you need to indicate to people that it's not a certainty when you say it. But in many cases, sometimes it can be, if there's, particularly if it's qualified within a budget or a revenue. So if we commit, if our representatives, if us, if we commit to something, I think we should, we should do that, because it's important to developers that we deal with, it's important to the community and the citizens that we deal with, that they trust that we are being truthful. And in this case, this individual acted as a result of that good faith in the city and made a choice.
Walmart has already signed off on their
They had, and they, and they paid it. And this individual did that action.
So we're the only ones holding?
We are, and this individual did that action. It's a larger, broader spectrum of issues with this, because this is a stormwater issue, and it's a really good, it's a good teachable moment and all that stuff. I don't want to prattle on forever about it, other than to say, really, the key element here is that we're getting into a more enthusiastic play-in field in the future with our permitting processes and who we are as a primary perma-tee. And that's on the stormwater level, that's on a building level, that's on a building inspection level, the things we've been talking about, very mature concepts. And in this case, though, what it boils down to is essentially, it is a civil issue between these two private individuals, but the city did interject itself in there, and with good faith, someone acted and spent money. And if we had had a complaint, and we went out there to fix the situation or to be involved, which we do in many cases in a drainage level, us fixing the situation in a very fundamental way, I'm talking just plain old granite or limestone on that, you know, and a little skid work down there, still would have been around a $5,000 cost, same cost we have invested in this effort.
I just have a comment. And I, I think the property owner should, you know, we should, I don't think we should expect that property owner should pay more than he expected at the point, at the, at the time. But to me, it seems, if I were making this agreement for myself, what I would try to do is make it between Walmart and Mr. Kessel and not get involved. And so is there any way we could go back to Walmart and not put pressure on Kessel, but put pressure on Walmart?
No.
There water.
No, there is none.
Why isn't it?
The reason is because they did everything they were required to by our current law.
But did anyone ask them, just on a friendly basis, to say, hey, guys, you're part of our community here, you're about to get some kind of a discounted commercial rate, and I'll be glad to be part of that?
John, you
Oh, sorry, John.
You were there. We did ask them.
We did.
And it was friendly, but we required their stormwater retention pond, we required nodes for their plantings around the parking lot. We had them spend several nights with planning and zoning before it got into the council, and we agreed the plan back then, but we didn't have this 1/3, 1/3, 1/3 on the table. But we did require all kinds of things as far as that size project, dealing with the drainage, dealing with the retention, and it's a pretty good plan, really. The only problem is, and you're going to have this again the next time you have, and this again the next time you have, and you will have some projects that are competitive with that, where you'll wanna have stormwater retention again and you're, you're gonna have the same kinds of draining issues. When the drainage goes downhill, I mean, I suppose one thing you could say to the party that has the Dry Run Creek is, well, that's just what gravity does with water. But that's usually the case in every lawsuit over drainage rights, is whether you really can dump that much from something that all of a sudden has several acres of concrete on somebody that didn't have that before. So we had a friendly approach with Walmart when we did that. Walmart, I think, felt this was the tail end of the deal as far as the landscaping and the stream. And honestly, I, uh, until Kevin brought up the fact that there was that agreement, I, I didn't realize it tailed out that way. But I, I remember the whole show as far as what we were gonna do with that much cement and that much drainage. And you'll have it again, I guarantee you.
But is there, is there any reason we couldn't at least go to them? I would be, have to be part of it. I mean, Walmart is like the world's sixth largest economy or something, you know, right, right behind Great Britain or something, you know, they, you know, they.
But they act a little like Great Britain too when you ask them.
Yeah, well, they, they, they can be good neighbors here. I think, uh.
At one point I did.
I mean, otherwise I'd be okay with this. I mean, but I, I.
I think it'd be more comfortable if we approved it so that we could give it to the property owner. And then if you want to try to get a reimbursement after that from Walmart, that's great, but I just feel it. Uh, this is something he's been dealing with since two thousand eight.
I would wanna point out something very important here too. John, in his usual brilliance, this kind of reminded me of a very important point here, and that is his statement of how we handled this. Well, right now, Mel and I are looking at another one of these instances, uh, with another commercial entity. And we're kind of trying to act as brokers to get company A to do something that takes stormwater B and, and, and has a little more retention, uh, on site and causes for the flow to be what we feel like won't be a negative impact on the private citizen, the residential citizen, by the way, not another corporate, but a residential or a commercial, you know, a residential citizen. So in many cases, that may be the case. But right now, as a perma-tee, we have no stormwater ordinance, we have no soil and sedimentation ordinance, we have no land disturbance permit, we don't have the core beginning functioning of a permitting process because we have chosen as a perma-tee not to be the primary. In other words, for what's called NPDES, the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. This is what the Clean and Water Act is all about. And if you're talking about construction, if you disturb more than one acre, uh, it used to be five, now it's one, they came down in two thousand three on these numbers. But if you do that, you've gotta get a permit from the state DNR. You go out, you pay so much an acre. When we get to the point where we have a land disturbance permit and a permitting process that's real and, and the code is, is put together the way it should be, in other words, the zoning code, then we will be doing that as well on a, on a primary front-end level. And that makes it where, before this thing would get to the case of where it's at, we would have already been through a big process where that person come in, I'm gonna do a development, here's my plans, I want my LDP, well, you can have it in two weeks, send the plans to city engineer, city engineer reviews plans, basin maybe not large enough, we feel like it could be larger, whatever. Usually the plans are fine. In this case, honestly, the math rests with Walmart. The math is with them. Bolton and Mink or whatever engineering company here in this city that built that Walmart, believe me, that pond is correct. But in many cases, ponds can be correct and there yet be a negative impact. It's the reality of stormwater. And so, uh, I guess we'll be more prepared in the future to not get in this position. But the positions that your present people in these offices, city engineer and city administrator are taking are to be the arbiter of a, or the brokerage of a, of an agreement between companies, because companies don't wanna get into these situations. Walmart gave that thousand dollars gladly, or five thousand gladly. They knew the math was with them, but they go to the, uh, the court with it, they go to the, to the playing field with it, oh, they're gonna get slapped for ten to fifteen thousand for the same deal. So they'll say, hey, you know, I'll give you five thousand, can we walk away? That was a third of the cost of this improvement, satisfactory to the private property owner. We won't get in this position again and we'll make sure on an ordinance level, hopefully, that, uh, on a structural level, we couldn't be put in that position again.
I think if our city administrator previous agreed to that, we need to go along with that and, and approve that five thousand dollars to spend that. And if Walmart came up before they built and said, look, I'll build this great big giant store here, have all the employees here, if you give me five thousand dollars, we'd do it in a heartbeat.
So is that a motion?
That's a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Hamilton, second by Hamilton. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Uh, and we have an update on RagBri, Michael.
Yeah, just, uh, there's not much to report since last time. We're just continuing to plug away. See the city crews hard at work making our streets smoother and our pedestrian crosswax walks even more distinguished. It's a, it's a sight to behold. Good job, Daryl and crews. Um, a little plug for our T-shirts. They are walking coupons. If you buy one this week, starting Friday and the five Fridays leading up to RagBri, you can walk into a long list of establishments that'll give you, uh, a price break of some kind. I'm not gonna go into it tonight because I don't wanna say one and forget the others, but you can check that out. And, um, still looking for housing hosts, if anyone wants to open up their house or yard.
We are.
But Kevin, what's, I thought you were volunteering.
Oh, no. No, I'm not.
Locations.
I already have three crazy people in my house. I'm kidding.
Chamber, the chamber office and where else?
Oh, where you get your T-shirts?
Yes.
Hy-Vee.
Hy-Vee.
Hy-Vee, chamber office.
Visitors Bureau office, in the upstairs of the convention center.
Upstairs of the convention center.
Yeah, and that's actually, I'm not just plugging it because they're cool, I'm plugging it because that's revenue for the event. We're trying not to go in the black, or go in the red, we wanna profit and give money back to our local nonprofits when we're done. Anything from your side, chief? Chief is, uh, head of public safety, law enforcement and a lot of cool things like that.
Um, the biggest thing is, yes, the roads, it's gonna impact traffic flow. My, I encourage everybody, if they can go run all their errands on Thursday or Saturday afternoon after they leave, uh, we're encouraging everybody to walk or ride a bicycle that day. Um, if everybody doesn't know, the main route east and west goes down Grimes, um, to Sixth Street, across Briggs to D, south a block to Broadway. And then we have roads, um, shoot, going off to the main campground. So twenty-eighth, Ninth Street, Sixth Street, Fillmore and D Street go to the campgrounds. There are a bus route, there's a bus route on the east side and the west side that we'll be running. Um, we have designated shuttle stops to accommodate, um, the campgrounds. A lot of people are saying, hey, I wanna be picked up at my residence that I'm staying at. It's not gonna work that way. Um, you have to get yourself to a shuttle stop and things like that. Um, we know that it is gonna be a major inconvenience for everybody. We just, you know, ask for everybody's patience. We'll get through twenty-four hours of this. Um, the next Saturday, there is that breakfast at the Barnes. It is going south on Highway one into Kiasakwa and the villages from here.
Just a reminder, it's July twenty-sixth is the big day. Um, also, this Wednesday,